Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Marybuck.
Here.
Nordhuck.
Standstruck.
Here.
Trust.
Here.
Vanderwal.
And Mermas.
Here.
So before we get started, both councilmember Nordhuck and Vanderwal have been asked to, have asked for the excuse tonight. Is there a motion to excuse?
So, support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. The opposition, please say no. Great. Well, tonight, councilmember Gelderlos will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who actually want to stand for the invocation, whether followed out by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father of heaven, we come before you with grateful hearts and humility, and we offer a simple prayer of thanksgiving. We confess that living in this city of Granville, that we have so much to be thankful for. We're so blessed. We pray your blessing especially on all those who service for our police, our fire, our DPW, our city staff, all those who work so hard to make this a great place to live. And we ask for your guidance this evening for this council as we make decisions for the betterment of the community, for your wisdom, for your knowledge, for all things Granville that we might serve this community in your helpful spirit. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion and support. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, August 25th. You've had a chance to take a look at those minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
Motion and support.
Support.
Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out, emphasize? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Griffin, another substantial amount. This is kind of exciting. Again, there's a, I don't know, fourth, fifth meeting in a row. Shows a lot is going on, Greg, a lot of infrastructure. So, anything you'd like to point out on the bills tonight?
Happy to. Yeah, we're looking at a more average amount compared to our meetings in the amount of 616,000. As you mentioned, this is a very infrastructure-heavy bills list. Only about 10% of the list today is coming out of the general fund. Most of it's being dominated by the water and sewer farms this time. A few bills just to highlight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. One in the amount of $27,787 Brick Plumbing LLC. This is the ongoing miscellaneous lead service line replacements that the DPW is undertaking to comply with some of those state orders post-Flint. We have DAVI Resource Group in the amount of $2,500. This is the annual Tree Keeper software that the city subscribes to that helps to manage a lot of those Tree City-type projects that I know we undertake. Dos and Bobcat North America in the amount of $93,043.95. This is the telehandler that was approved for the Clean Water Plant back on July 14th. EKOF Columbarium, Inc., the second of three payments. What is exciting about that one is originally when we put the deposit down, we didn't anticipate we would get that until the spring. Charlie, DPW, let me know that we will be able to actually get that installed later this month. So, we're going to be kind of notably add a schedule on that one. Georgetown Construction, amount of $325,829.41. This is the second-to-last payment for the 31st and Wallace Water Main Replacement Project. Do want to note for you all that the last payment that we see at a future meeting, I will note at that time, there are going to be some withholdings from that one based out of the final retainage amount via liquidated damages that we've been calculating. They did break their contract and extend that project longer. I think we all have talked about that one a little bit, some of the issues we had at the end. So, that does ultimately have a financial consequence for them. And then lastly, Hillard Electric, the amount of $33,402.40. This is a lot of the electric pre-work taking place at the Clean Water Plant. They've got kind of their miscellaneous capital projects, but a lot of this is the prep for installing the new SCADA system that was approved at the last meeting on August 25th. So, those are the few invoices I have to highlight this evening, but I'm happy to discuss any others.
Questions for Griffin or Jenny? Any of the bills? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $616,985.30?
Some support.
Motion and support. Any other comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Marybuck.
Yes.
Steenstruck.
Yes.
Trust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mermas.
Yes. Tonight, we have a couple presentations. The first one is from Police Chief Anglin about the cadet program for 2025. I know that cadets have been out and about and heard good things, so.
Thank you, sir.
Please do your presentation.
Here to present our cadet program for 2025. This was our fourth year of doing it. This year, we were able to hire two cadets, Grameen Carr on the left and Mackenzie Paul on the right. We knew we were in for a fun summer as soon as we got Grameen's bio. She is a native of the country of India, and she phonetically spelled out her name and said that it's pronounced Grameen, but it really should be Grenice. And we knew that we would have a good summer with her after that. Grameen is a 2025 graduate from Granville High School. She was nominated by our agency for the MACP scholarship. Sadly, she came in third. We only gave out two scholarships this year. She is attending Ferris State University, and we actually lost her a week earlier than anticipated because she did such a good job for us. We did a little networking for her and got her hired by Ferris Campus Police. And based on just the interview, they brought her up early so she could assist with college moving. She'll be studying criminal justice. Like I said, she is going to be working for campus police, and she also hopes to play on the intramural rugby team. More importantly, she has expressed a desire to come back and work with us again next summer, so we're really happy about that. Mackenzie Paul is a 2024 graduate from Granville High School. She was a 2024 MACP scholarship winner, again sponsored by our department. She's currently attending Madonna University where she's a sophomore. She had to leave early because she is a collegiate soccer player. She plays goalie on her collegiate team and does a little bit of semi-pro stuff during the summer as well. She also indicated a strong desire to come back and work with us next year. The program goals, just as a quick reminder, we started this program four years ago, thanks in large part to a donation from the Waller Family Foundation. And our goals were to increase the department's visibility and interaction with our citizens during the summer months, to increase city employee visibility along our parks, or in our parks, along our trail systems, and to provide additional staffing for us for all of our summer community outreach programs. And they really knocked it out of the park. We also use it to help with our recruiting efforts. Out of the seven cadets that we have employed to date, three of which have earned jobs with police departments. Some of the events that they attended, the Fourth of July Parade, Carnival and fireworks, they put in a double shift and talking to them, they're starting to learn what it takes to work in our profession, but they had a blast. They assisted with bike fitting helmet at KDL, the signature kickoff event for the program, cones, cops and cadets over at Tippy Cow. They made multiple appearances at our farmer's market. After our cadets last summer made a connection with the Granville Public Schools Community Ed Program, this year, we were specifically asked if our cadets couldn't stop by and hang out, and they did that quite frequently and were very well received. They assisted us at the KDL Touch a Truck. This year, we had the cadets work some nighttime hours, and I believe they were at every one of the summer music festivals, National Night Out, and of course, Police in the Parks. Of course, when you look at a program, you look at the numbers. Trail patrols hit at 96, park visits 212, and that's from June through basically the first week in August. So, they really crunched in a lot of work. The two of them worked a total of 728 hours. They logged just under 2,000 miles on bicycle patrol, and more importantly, they interacted with over 8,000 people. That's really important. On this next slide, we're going to compare the years. Some of their numbers went down, but in the interaction, which is really the most important part of this program, they interacted with 1,000 more people than the three previous year's cadets combined. So, we were really happy with their activities. Like I said, park visits went down a substantial amount from the previous year, but they spent a lot more time on target and actually interacting with the people. Same with trail patrols. Persons interacted with, like I said, they knocked it out of the park, logged more bike patrol hours, and they also worked more hours than any of the previous cadet groups. One of the reasons why we got more hours is there was a shift from part-time to seasonal for them, which allowed us to work, work them 40 hours. We had enough in our budget to allow that, especially knowing that we were going to lose them a little earlier in the season than a couple of the other ones we had in the past. We also had them working more evening hours. We found out during that experiment, it's really kind of mixed. On the Friday nights when we had city events, it was really good. On the other nights, we kind of found the sweet spot for crowds in the park is about 11 o'clock to about 4:00 or 5:00, were the key times that they were able to interact with people in the parks. And again, we were requested by Community Ed to hang out with them on a more regular basis. Other patrol times, they spent just over 40% of their time on trails, just under 50% in the parks. And, you know, we partnered with our Parks and Recs Department for our summer series. That was great. And the time that they spend in the commons, that's mainly on all the city events. To give you an idea of what they did, they spent 226 hours in bike patrol, spent just under 90 hours covering city events in comparison to just over 18 hours of department-specific events. They were in park patrol for 116 hours. The office assignment, we tried to be reasonable with them. They were out riding bikes in hot temperatures, that kind of stuff, but when it's pouring and raining, we bring them in and we have them trained to assist our records staff doing fingerprinting for applicants, doing some of the clerical work, that kind of stuff. Some of the other duties, they went out and assisted at the High School Police Academy, gave presentations based on their experiences going through those programs and not working as cadets. We had them do some role-playing for some training, and because we're trying to use this as a recruiting tool, again, on the more fall weather days, we actually gave them some ride time so they could get some experience from the patrol aspect as well. Then, this is just a conglomeration of a bunch of different events that they had. Again, it was a very great group to work with. They were very outgoing, and we do hope that they come back again next summer and be happy to answer any questions on the program that you might have.
Great. Thanks for a good presentation. It looks like it was very, very successful, and it's encouraging they both want to come back. And also, they're both studying criminal justice. Are there a lot of, do most other departments have cadet programs or?
East Grand Rapids has one similar to ours where it's a summer seasonal. Just about everybody else has cadets year-round. So, they do a lot of different things depending on the size of the agency, you know, like out at Sheriff's Department, their cadets actually work in corrections, communications, that kind of stuff as well, so.
Questions for the chief? Any comments? Randy?
I saw them out, in about quite a bit. Of course, they're just right behind the police station. It was just nice to see their presence and their attitude. They always have a smile on their face, and it's just great to see them in there, express their interest in law enforcement. So, I'm glad to have them.
Exactly. And Grameen, going up to Ferris, she asked if there's any possibility to do stuff over the breaks. We explained that that's not the way the program's currently structured, but, you know, that we would definitely welcome her back for next summer, because that obviously is going to decrease our training time, and we can get them out and active for that much quicker, so. All right. Thank you very much.
Tim?
I really like it that they're local kids, so that was really cool. But remind us again, how do you get all these numbers? I mean, all the contact numbers, what they're doing, do they keep track of that? They log all that?
Yeah. They, they have to do a daily report, just like a police officer. We're trying to teach them what the job's about, and they have to account for their time and what they're doing, so. And, you know, like some of the events, I'll give you, especially Police in the Parks, some of those, it's an estimate. You kind of look at the materials that we brought, how much you gave away, and make estimates, but the numbers are pretty solid.
Nice. Interesting.
Thank you.
And anybody who can play goalie, you know, that's a good person to have.
Yes, definitely. And with Grameen playing rugby, I don't, I would not have any problem going down in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next presentation we have is with our IT director, Jason Ramon. I'm going to talk about our cybersecurity policy. And so I understand it's kind of more of a presentation rather than any action report.
Yeah, not going to seek any action on this, this evening, just really trying to give council a brief introduction to it, give people a chance to kind of digest over the next few weeks, and then we'll plan to bring it back at a future meeting for consideration.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. So, like Griffin said, just got some thoughts around this. I don't plan on really digging into any of the technical details. I'm happy to at the end or later on, if you so wish. Happy to say tonight, also not really looking for any money for this. A lot of, I know usually when I come up, it's not great news, so. A lot of the stuff that's being talked about in here, really what we're doing is officializing what you're already doing, stuff that's already been implemented or already budgeted. One thing I'm really happy about, just with our partnership between Granville and Walker, we were able to add him into a cybersecurity position. The problem is when you put the software, these policies and stuff into place, that's only half the equation. The other half is who's actually going to do the stuff in it. So, Adam's already done a lot of work in the backend, especially down here already, you know, trying to secure things and doing stuff that's being talked about in here. So, the big thing with this is even though we're doing a lot of this stuff in the background, the reason we need to put these policies into place is so that when we need to show other organizations what we're doing, we have a set of policies. So, for example, like your, your bonds, Griffin reminded me earlier, we had the same thing at Walker through when we just sold our bonds to our library, is one of the things they look at now is your cybersecurity posture, right? So, these policies are something you can show to them to show this is what we're doing. The other one is like for cyber insurance. So, through the MML right now, you have a very basic level of cyber insurance, but frankly, if we had an incident, it's not going to go that far in covering it. To get actual cybersecurity insurance, you have to have these policies to show them, what are we doing, so then they know the risk, so they can appropriately able to, you know, quote, quote that. So, that would help with those premiums, help them have lower for one. Well, for one, to even be able to get it, a lot of cyber insurance companies won't even give you any cyber insurance without something like this in place. Then two, having this helps bring the premiums down when we do go get that, so. Those are the two big things I had. Like I said, it's really just officializing what we're doing, making sure that we can show it other organizations and stuff like that, you know, this is our policy, this is our framework if that comes up, so. Is there any questions outside of that or anything I can help with? I, I'll admit, some parts in here are very dense. That's why I'm not going into detail with it. At one point, these policies, when I was making them, that were at 100 pages, because there's just so much that has to cover. So, some of these in here, the reason that they're dense like they are is trying to, was trying to get a lot of, lot of ideas, a lot of words into something small that is at least a little bit more manageable, right? So.
Some other couple things I'll share just for context that I know Jason and I and the team have been working on getting this to this point is, this proposed policy manual or handbook, if you will, is very identical to something that Jason helped the city of Walker put in place. So, just to give you all confidence, we're not kind of making this up out of the blue, but again, trying to just make sure we're, we're keeping up with our peers in terms of refreshing and implementing the necessary policies. So, right now, in terms of what the city currently has adopted for cybersecurity, IT-related policies is candidly very little. We have an acceptable use policy that I think was last updated in like 2006.
I guess earlier than that.
It may mean earlier than that, and that's about it. And as you all are very aware, just from using technology in your everyday lives, I mean, how the city uses technology is so different than how we did 10, 15, 20 years ago. So, I think putting a policy like this in place that's up-to-date and modern, and as Jason mentioned, is really not moving us in a new direction, but is just formalizing our existing practices, is really the first step for kind of that continuous improvement and being able to make sure we're continuing to stay on to date on things like these. So, again, I will admit, I asked Jason not to go into too much detail, because a lot of this is, again, what we have people like him and his team for and really to advise us, but we're just wanting to get you in front of you all and give you a chance to digest it. And, I mean, if there are questions this evening, or if you'd like to talk some more moving forward, we can, but what the idea is sometimes that sometime this fall, we would like to bring this to you all for adoption.
You just answered my question. Now, what's going to be like, why don't we just go ahead and adopt it soon?
Definitely can do that.
Yeah.
Josh?
This is very concise. It's great. I'm assuming these are kind of just more general IT and security policies, like our finance department, or our billing departments, or our police department, all general records, retention, security policies around that kind of data, right?
Yes.
This is just kind of more for the general?
It is for the general. There is specifically, like the PD has to file something called Criminal Justice Information Systems Compliance. It doesn't, if, if there's not a compliance policy or framework like that, it's just, sorry, I'm talking backwards for some reason. So, yeah, it sets a general baseline, and then if we have compliance and stuff beyond that, we have to file outside of that, so.
Some of our software systems will have their own policies that we have to agree to or implement.
It will, but these also formalize things, like sometimes when you're signing up for new software, they'll say that, you know, they want remote access, or they want to interact with it in a certain way, and then this gives me the ability to say, no, the council has said this is how we purchase software. This is our risk tolerance. This is how we're, you know, you got to work with our terms in this way, so. It does help me in that aspect when you're looking at new software and stuff like that. Gives me a little bit more ammunition to help fight those battles, I guess, so.
Good. Yeah. Thank you for your comment.
Question. In here, it says that who does the policy apply to in a toxin list, and employees and volunteers and so on? Would they, do they apply to the court, or do they have their own?
They also have to file that compot, the CGS compliance that I mentioned, but in general, it should apply to all employees. So, it should be kind of like, this applies in general, and then that adds on, essentially what I'm saying. So, it should go file under court employees too.
I mean, I'm sure that the police department has its own thing and the lean system as a whole.
I would think about this as the minimum standard, and then as many of you has alluded to, we definitely have departments or specific functions that are going to have above and beyond what this sets forth.
Yes.
I also appreciate you mentioning, I guess another reason that I hadn't thought about that you would want a policy. It's good, it's a good practice to have, but also, if you ever do want to purchase more than basic cybersecurity insurance, you're going to have to have it.
Really, that's, well, we needed it in general at both cities, but it was about two years ago, I think, Marcy, when we looked at getting that kind of official, we had to get these in place so we could even look at purchasing that, so.
Any questions for Jason? Great. Thanks very much.
No problem. Thanks for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now, we've got a public hearing in a little bit, but before we do that, it's time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you think about tonight. Anything? Kyla? Oh, Jason. Welcome.
Good evening. Jason Flanagan, 4323 Puyott Drive, Southwest. I just came to shamelessly plug our event on Saturday. The ESC is hosting Buck Creek EcoQuest. We hope you can join, 9:00 to noon. Lots of fun activities for the whole family, bigger and better than last year, and we're excited for some of the new things, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I'll be there. I know Kyla, you're going to be there as well, right? Kyla, anything you want to talk about? We, we saw in our materials for the grant application, it looked really good. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all or not, but we.
It is. No, I'm, I'm good for.
Okay. All right. Sorry to put you on the spot like that, but.
All right.
All right. Yeah. Anyway, the grant application, it was, it was done very, very well. We all had a chance to look at it and it looked really nice.
Well, because they went to an online format, it was a little bit tough to download it, and so I have to go through it line by line, and I just made it into a Word document, and Matt's going to help me submit it, because he's actually the person that can submit for the city of Granville. So, we're looking forward to that. That will be Arbor Day celebration in Heritage Park if we're awarded that grant. Also, with some exciting things coming up with the Granville Community Tree Project, we have tomorrow night, we're going to hold the first class in the outdoor classroom over at the Oakstown Intermediate School, and we have a certified arborist that's going to walk us through identifying trees and teach us how and what to look for, and we'll kind of do a little scavenger hunt with trees, so it should be really fun. In a couple weeks, we're going to do a planting class, because we were awarded the Consumers Energy Grant, and so we'll do a planting class on September 27th, and then we'll be planting the week after the Fall Fest, and we're going to be planting east of Wilson and north of 28th Street on some side streets there that really don't have a lot of trees, so I'm kind of excited about that. We kind of have a schedule actually on our website, so at granvilltreeproject.org, you can see the events that we're going to participate in, like the EcoFest and some of the other things. So, some fun things are coming along, and we're getting a really energetic group on our board, so that helps too. Steve, we appreciate all your support. He goes out and shovels mulch.
Enjoy doing it.
It's fun.
Great. Question. The tree identification, that's tomorrow at?
It's Wednesday night.
A Wednesday night. At what time?
At 6:00.
At 6:00. Okay. By Oakstown, the outdoor. Okay.
It's near the tennis courts, if you aren't aware where the outdoor classroom is.
Because as starting in elementary school, when we had to have a leaf collection, I tried to learn how to identify trees, and I'm still not very good at it, so thanks for providing that up.
I struggle sometimes too, so. It's always, you always learn more, and it's always fun, so thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kyla. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up. Okay. If not, we have a public hearing scheduled.
I struggle sometimes too, so it's always, you always learn more and it's always fun, so thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up. If not, we have a public hearing scheduled for, uh, seven o'clock, so, yeah, this evening. For Timber Flats LLC Brownfield Plan. Matt, I don't know if you want to kind of introduce that, we've talked about it before, or Griffin? And then I, I think our DDA, uh, chair would like to make some comments.
I, I'd be happy to. So, um, as a friendly reminder, uh, Timber Flats, uh, and Moxie presented an overview of their project a couple of weeks back. At that time, um, they gave a short presentation and an overview of, uh, their proposed project. And included in your packet for this evening is the complete, uh, Brownfield Plan with all of the associated documents. I will be the first to admit, uh, if you take a look at it, it can be a little overwhelming. Um, so if you're okay, I, uh, prepared just a, a short summary that I think, uh, does a de- a decent job at really summarizing what that plan encompasses. So Moxie Real Estate and Development entered into a development agreement with the Downtown Development Authority back in February. Uh, that agreement set the framework for them to sell the DDA-owned parking lot at thirty-sixty-six Fayette to Moxie to be redeveloped into a three-story mixed-use building. Um, that project is going to include fourteen one-bedroom apartments, fourteen two-bedroom apartments, uh, a small amount of first-floor commercial, uh, and community space, onsite parking, among other amenities. The project received site plan approval from the Planning Commission back in April, and the total investment in the project is anticipated to be over seven million dollars. To make this project happen, Moxie is seeking tax increment financing from both local and state, uh, sources to offset costs of eligible activities, uh, totaling just over two-point-five million. The site qualifies as eligible, uh, property under Act Three One as a housing property. And the developer reimbursement is expected to, uh, take place over a twenty-year period ending in twenty forty-five. But I would like to note that the way this plan is structured, uh, during the first ten years, the TIF from the Brownfield Plan, uh, would be, uh, severely limited, would be very small, uh, because they would be stacking it with a commercial rehabilitation abatement that would come at a later date. Um, they can't formally apply for that until, uh, they close on the property, but that stacking is anticipated by, uh, this plan. So the second ten years of the plan would be where they would really get most of their reimbursement, uh, back. Because the property is located within the DDA district, uh, the plan also includes a tax share agreement between the city, the DDA, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. That agreement is needed to allow the BRA to capture, uh, the taxes from the property that would otherwise be captured by the DDA to reimburse the development. This type of agreement is common, uh, throughout the state of Michigan and really allows DDA's, BRA's, um, cities and developers to work together, uh, to make projects like this happen. Um, because that property, um, is also in the DDA, uh, we negotiated a municipal services agreement where during, uh, the life of the plan, the DDA will receive, uh, a small amount of that capture during the time, uh, that they can use to reinvest in all of the good work that the DDA is doing all the time. So city staff worked really close with the city attorney and Moxie's team over the last several months to get this plan and project to where we are this evening, um, and are really excited to hear from anyone who would like to speak. And I know many of us here, um, are happy to answer any questions you all may have about the project and the proposed Brownfield Plan.
Great. Thanks for the intro and summary. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing, uh, for Timber Flats LLC Brownfield Plan?
So, support.
Motion's support. Any discussion? All of us in favor of opening the public hearing, please say yes.
Yes.
In opposition, please say no. Great. Anybody like to talk about the plan? Mr. Barr, welcome, councillor.
Mr. Barr's my dad. Come on. Joel Barr, uh, I have the privilege of serving as the DDA chair for Granville and have done so now for a couple of years. I, I want to take you back to that time when we had a pretty new board a couple of years ago and we were asking questions because we didn't know better. Um, we knew that our, our charge was to do development and do events in our downtown as the Downtown Development Authority. And so we started asking questions, what tools do we have in our toolbox in order to assist so that we're ready for redevelopment when a developer comes knocking on the door saying, hey, we've got an idea for a project in your community, but in order to do that project, we're probably going to need some assistance from some of these opportunities that are readily available in other communities. And so working with Griffin, working with Teresa, working with Matt and our staff, uh, we started looking at, at the tools in the toolbox. And that's where the Commercial Rehabilitation District came in. Uh, that's, I remember specifically asking the question of Griffin of, okay, we've got a Brownfield, uh, group, but when was the last time the Brownfield Group met? And it had been some time. Um, but so we've got the tools, now we need to make it known to developers. And as the Downtown Development Authority, one of the comments made at one of our meetings was, well, parking lots are important, but we're not necessarily in the business of owning a parking lot. And then an opportunity came along to have a conversation with a developer of, hey, something could be done on this parking lot on Fayette. And let's talk about that. Let's dream. Let's, one of the benefits of owning that property by the DDA is that we could then take a look at the opportunities. We could retain it, we could sell it, we could do other things with it, but we could control what went into our community. And that was one of the things that we, that was really important to us, was having a say in what could we be built there and who to partner with. And working with our staff and, and, and getting approval from city council on the Commercial Rehabilitation District and reaching a point where, hey, we've got a real opportunity to have a catalyst, uh, project happen in our community. We, we see what's happening in other communities around West Michigan, and some of those things are because they're redevelopment-ready. And we are now redevelopment-ready here in Granville, and that's exciting because now that we're gonna have a catalyst project kicking off here, hopefully, what else is gonna come next, uh, around the corner? And what's personally exciting for me is that this project has a housing component to it that's really needed in our downtown. You want to have activity in your downtown? Well, you need some people living nearby that can, that's walkable. And some of these projects, in, in my day job, I work with nonprofits that help get housing opportunities for those that have life challenges. And we've been renting entire floors of these new buildings and putting in what we kind of call an RA and then providing limited assistance to those who are looking to transfer a little more independent lifestyle. And as mom and dad get aged and they're looking at their loved one with some special needs, but still unique and able to live independently, they can work, they can walk to their job. And having a walkable location in a downtown area is significant for these individuals so that they can live their best life. And so I'm excited for that opportunity as well because there is always a need, uh, to have jobs in a downtown corridor uh, along with housing to attract and retain talented people. And that's one of the exciting things for this project. I mean, we have a tremendous residential, uh, building in the castle. And that certainly has been an impactful part of our community, but to put something in our central business district here uh, with the tools in the toolbox that have come along, I think it's pretty, pretty exciting, pretty impactful to see that building rise over the next, uh, year or plus. Um, and I can't, uh, underestimate or undersay how hard our staff at the city has worked on this. Um, Griffin and Teresa and Matt and the rest of the city staff have really identified some of these, uh, projects and opportunities and the tools in the toolbox to assist in attracting this type of project. Working with our city attorney, Dave, has been great because we know we're doing it right, and Griffin has done this before. And so I'm excited and I hope you're excited too, to see something like this come to fruition. Uh, there was one of the charges we kind of had as a DDA of, okay, what can we do here that's going to make an impact in our community? So thank you for considering all of them.
And, um, if I could just interrupt or ask a quick question. So, um, DDA has given an endorsement?
Oh, yeah, this is fully supported by the DDA unanimously, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else, uh, like to speak to it? Come on up to the podium, give us your name and address. Okay. Trevor, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for having us back again. Uh, not a lot has changed since last time we talked. I did get an update that I shared with Griffin this morning from the MEDC that was very positive. Uh, but they received the latest round of feedback from their underwriting team, and they're hoping that within the next three weeks, they'll be able to have, um, an outward intent to us for the other portion of the funding that is needed, um, before their month-end fiscal, their fiscal year ends at month-end. Um, so we're hoping that that's the, the last piece of this puzzle as we work through this, which will give us kind of the green light to kind of pro- to proceed with everything else that's been discussed. So, um, very good news that we received this morning on our call with, uh, the MEDC, so. That's the update I have. Any questions? Feel free, so. Questions for Trevor and Ben? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to the ESC? No? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion?
Support.
And support. Thank you, Paul. All of us in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay. So we have before us a proposed resolution number thirty-three eighty. That's a resolution adopting Brownfield Plan pursuant to and in accordance with provisions of Act Three One and the Public Acts of the State of Michigan of nineteen ninety-six as amended. Lot of material. You've had a chance to look at that. Uh, is there a motion to, um, adopt that resolution?
So, motion?
Support. Support by Josh. Other comments, questions?
I have a.
Yeah, Brady.
I have a few questions to quote, uh, Joe Barr. I, I may not know any better, but in regards to like some of the commercial, community aspect of this, I thought there was gonna be, um, slighting order of a commercial component, and is, is this a commercial space or is this just the area that's available for public use or?
So I can answer it a couple of ways and I can defer to Trevor, who can probably fill in a little bit of the gap. So, you know, originally, when we were talking with, um, the DDA, um, kind of doing that dreaming component, uh, what they have really been looking for is attracting, uh, level of mixed-use development into the downtown. Um, ultimately, when a site was identified and a, a partner, a development firm as a partner was identified, what ultimately they worked through was finding that what we don't want to do is overbuild on commercial space that we're not going to be able to fill. And the location of this property set off of Chicago Drive a little bit , um, creates a different environment for, um, storefront commercial space as if it were fronting Chicago Drive. In that case, I can tell you, we would have wanted to see a lot more, um, commercial space proposed. But ultimately, with the location, um, and the back and forth we had with the development team and trying to meet the goals of the DDA, uh, we found that, um, limiting the commercial space more to be available to rent out to some low-impact office uh, was going to be a better fit at this location and then using most of the square footage, uh, for housing. Um, but in terms of the use of the commercial space, my understanding is it's designed to be leasable. But if they're unable to lease it or if in the short term it's not leased, it would be able to be converted to community amenity space, uh, for the residents living in that building.
Yep. I don't know if I could answer any better than Griffin did, but the biggest need was, yeah, yeah. Biggest need was the housing, and that's, you, as Griffin said, setback off Chicago Drive. It, you know, the, the viability of commercial space and the rest of that first floor would be hard.
And I think I think that shows you guys a little bit of like the, the give and take that happens in some of these projects because originally, when we started, I think our expectation and desire was more commercial space, but then learning from Moxie and their staff and their experience in building these types of projects, we were able to do that give and take to realize that if that's not the best fit at that location, then we need to be flexible enough. Because what we want at the end of the day is a successful project.
I like the project. I love the project. I think it's needed. I guess my only, that was one question I had.
Yeah.
The other concern I have is like, this is like a pretty big informational dump for the weekend. I'd be more comfortable if we tabled and brought it back up two weeks from now or the next council meeting. I support the project. However, if the consensus of the council is to move forward with it, uh, I have a feeling I agree with you. But it, it is a lot to read and digest in a day and a half, so, but I like the project.
Other thoughts? Okay. Um, we do have a motion and support on, on this resolution. Um, Trevor, are you, I, I'm sure you'd like things done ASAP. Are there constraints of any kind that?
Yes, so we're working.
Aware of?
Yep, so part of our call with MEDC this morning was letting them know the status of where we are with, at the local level with the Brownfield and the PA Two Ten Tax payment because the LOI will not, um, be given until we have this portion of the project, um, approved. Because there's no reason for them to give us the letter of intent if the Brownfield, uh, plan was not approved because they kind of work together. Um, so time is important, but I mean, it always is, but yeah, yeah, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we do have a motion and support. Any other comments or questions before we vote on it? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Yellos?
Yes.
Merica?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Great. Congratulations. Thank you to, you know, like Joel had said, I thought you had left, but there you are. All right, good.
I prefer to be in the background.
Yeah, everybody's done a lot of work on this, so thank you very much and, and, uh.
Thank you.
Teresa, also, thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is, uh, the International Property Code that we talked about, uh, Property Management Code. Property Management Code. Uh, is there a motion to remove that from the table?
So, mo-
Motion?
Support.
And support. All of us in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposition? Matt, anything you'd like to talk about before taking a vote?
I have to answer any questions that you may have. It's pretty straightforward to get, we do this from time to time. If you have questions, please let us know. Thank you.
You have before you proposed ordinance number three nineteen. That's an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances for the city of Granville by amending Article Five of Chapter Six Building and Building Regulations. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
So.
Motion about ten?
Support.
And support by Paul. Any other comments, questions? Josh?
So I think it's important that we do have the standardization and that we update these codes to be, you know, consistent with other codes. And this is an international property maintenance code, but there was a couple of things in here that I thought were kind of interesting and I was wondering what, what's the, how do we enforce a couple of these things? Like, for example, we have part of this that has to do with making sure that you have insect screens in your windows during certain times of the year and then also about temperatures for rooms that are occupied, you know, as bedrooms during certain times of the year. How is that gonna be, how do we enforce that? Is that more of a, you know, complaint-based type of enforcement like we do with our other?
Typically, the, the temperature complaints are typically from tenants. Typically, we see those in the winter when it gets cold. There is a method for measuring the temperature. PCI does this type of inspections for us. I'm not out there measuring temperatures. It has to be two, two feet from the exterior wall and three feet from the floor to take that, at, at, average temp. Um, same thing with, uh, screens. If a tenant complained that their unit, for whatever reason, didn't have this screen, we'd send PCI out there. They'd confirm if there are no screens. They'd make contact with the landlord and require a screen to be placed. Good question.
So that, does, does that mainly apply to like rental properties then?
Applies to everybody.
As well. So if somebody, if I have a neighbor who has no screens in their windows, I could call them, that would be? call them, that would be something I could force?
Yes. Never, my 25 years of, 26 years, never had a complaint about no screens. But the answer is yes.
Because I take mine down and put it back up every year.
Yes. But it's between the, it's during the warm months.
Yeah. I think it is good to have some consistency. And I don't think, we probably had any code that included that level of detail previously.
Yes, we have. That's one of the amendments we've made to the code. That's been in the code for, at least since I've been with the city.
Just updating?
Just updating, yes.
With the new standards.
But the fact that it is, I mean, no different than the International Fire Code, the International Building Code, the International... It does give the standards we have more validity when they are, as you're mentioning, kind of that standard. Sure. As opposed to, I mean, don't get me wrong, you all can put in general powers ordinances and as long as they're reasonable, there's a lot of things you guys can do. But obviously, they have a lot more validity when they're, they're based on these types of standardizations.
And this is, and this is the code that generally applies when we have maintenance concerns, whether it's a dilapidated home or, as Assistant City Manager was saying, a rental unit that's not being well-maintained. It gives the city some teeth to be able to go in, to enforce, to address those issues. And, you know, we do that through the code enforcement process, the citation and, you know, possible fraction hearing typically.
Thank you.
Right?
So section 602 versus 6023 versus 6024. One says minimum room temperature is 68 degrees. The other says 65 degrees in all workspaces. Is that more of a commercial-type building or?
Yes. Yes. One is residential versus actually office or commercial workspace.
And just, and just to clarify, the code has a bunch of blanks in it for each municipality when adopted by reference to go through and it can specify certain standards. And so that's really what this, you know, is doing here on a fill-in-blank basis. Any other comments or questions?
Your office temperature is down to 65.
We've had a close to the hill once in the winter. Boiler went out on Monday morning. It was out all weekend. Got here and it was very frigid. So we did sit some staff home because expecting people to work at those temperatures, about 40s was unreasonable.
There's a few days where I'm happy if, when it's five below zero, if I can get the old house over there above 68 degrees. I know what you're talking about.
We've had, any other comments or questions? You've had a motion and support, I believe, right, Marcy?
Yes.
For the adoption of ordinance number 319. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Well, under the consent agenda, we have a number of things. So approval would be in the best interest of the city because there are quite a few purchase orders on it. There's some turnout here for the fire department, I think five vehicles and a utility vehicle and also upgrade of Calvincrest, Paulfield. Then we also have some reports from the police report in artist, which is always interesting. Thanks, chief. And some minutes from the tree board for a couple months. And so is there a motion to approve? And we can discuss things individually like we'd like, but first, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So move.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Anything anybody wants to talk about and specifically on here? Charlie, anything you want to talk about motor pool, vehicles or Chief Wild, bike turnoff here? Here? See your question? Okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galderlos?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City manager's report, you've got a few things for us tonight.
We do, thank you. Going to start with an automatic aid agreement with the city of Walker. So your packet should include a memo that details a request from fire department to enter and do an automatic aid agreement with the city of Walker. It's my understanding that the fire department has been working towards this from some time and they're, both departments are now in a place to be able to move forward. I know Chief May, over many years, had tried to get something in place and for a variety of different reasons, the timing was never right. But now with the new chief here, a new chief in the city of Walker, I know it's been something both new chiefs have kind of prioritized in their first month or so of work, is to formalize the partnership. So we already have similar agreements in place with Georgetown Township and the city of Wyoming. And I will just say that I know Chief Wild's here if there are additional questions. But the agreement is in the standard form that's used for these types of agreements in Kent County. My understanding is the central dispatch houses a lot of these because they're obviously the ones who are indicating who needs to go to what calls. But other than that, just for the north side of our community, getting some additional assistance automatically with the city of Walker is what's before you.
Questions for Griffin? Ready?
Oh, I think the automatic aid agreements are great, but did I read somewhere in there it was considered South Walker or Olive Walker? What is South Walker?
Do you want to speak to that area?
No, that's all right. Oh, I'm happy to answer that. So when you do these automatic aid agreements, you don't give them the whole city typically, you section it off. And so for what our ask is, is from the city of Walker, is from Prairie Street, east and west borders to the north border. And then Walker's ask of us is Lake Michigan Drive and South.
I was just wondering.
Nope.
How they define South Walker.
Yeah, so that's, and I believe in the auto aid agreement, those parameters are actually listed out under both sections.
Thank you. That's great.
And I'll also highlight, just because I, I think it is important, you know, when you have these mutual aid and automatic aid agreements, you know, to make sure that it is truly a partnership and you're giving as much as you're receiving. So again, we've been very fortunate with our partnerships with the neighboring communities. But just always important to highlight that there is an out in these agreements, that if for some reason down the road, we feel like we are providing more aid than we are receiving or theoretically vice versa from the city of Walker, you know, there is always an opportunity to step back from an agreement like this. Don't anticipate that being necessary, but I do think it's necessary to highlight.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of Walker Fire Department as outlined by the chief? And the document and?
So.
Yeah, I was surprised we didn't already have an agreement with automatic. I was really shocked, as a matter of fact, when the mayor of Walker asked me about this and then you at the, at the rapid board of directors meeting last week. I couldn't believe it, okay? So long overdue.
Yeah, totally, it's formalized. Maybe formally, they've been doing it, but yeah, I have dispatch.
Yeah.
Dispatch.
Yeah.
Automatically.
Automatic, right. Should be of that. You know, I know my former boss talked about how, what a huge deal that was in the Detroit area. Oh my God. Impossible to get those governments' word together for decades. Yes, yes, to get something like this. I mean, we're known in West Michigan for this. So just the fact that, I mean, I understand there was some, you know, some conflicts involved, but wow. I'm very glad that we're cleaning that up. I did not know that we lacked that.
Any other comments? Got motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrick?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next item is the Purdue Sackler Opioid Settlement Participation Agreement. So recommending this evening that the city council authorize the city manager to sign the participation agreement associated with the most recent opioid settlement, so the Purdue Sackler Opioid Settlement, on behalf of the city of Granville. This is very similar in regard to the other settlements related to the opioid crisis that the city has participated in. We couldn't find records, so I'll put this on me, of if these types of agreements have been brought to you all in the past, but with consulting with the city attorney, I know we're already participating in several of these settlements. We receive a relatively small amount of settlement funds from these that the city has used to date to purchase equipment for the police and fire departments, specifically AEDs. So the city attorney has reviewed the proposed agreement. Really, the only risk for us to understand is by signing the agreement, you're essentially saying you're not going to sue them separately, which I don't think the city of Granville really has any intent to go after any of these big pharmacy chains, pharmaceutical manufacturers or distributors individually. But what this does is not only help the state settlement, but also will bring a modest amount of funding to the city that we can use. So it is my recommendation to authorize the signing of this agreement.
Question for you. So traditionally, we use it for AEDs or public safety. Do we have to? I mean, I think it's.
We're very, we're very limited in what we can use the funding for. There's a couple of different buckets, if you will, but they all are directly related to opioid response. So there can be, you can do like education, you can do counseling, you can do kind of a few different buckets. But we had a short discussion about the use of opioid settlements in the last year that I've been here and talked about, did we have any interest in partnering with Kent County or creating some kind of grant program to find another use for these funds? And the consensus of the council at that time was we were just going to stick and use it for equipment purchases that we could reasonably associate with opioid response.
Questions for Griffin? Otherwise, is there a motion to enter into this opioid settlement? The Purdue Sackler Opioid Settlement Participation Agreement? Authorizing it? Griffin signed? We have to say. So is there a motion by Josh?
Support.
Support by Tim? Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Water meters.
Yes, so.
Very expensive.
They, they are quite expensive and quite important. We had a pretty good conversation about this topic two weeks ago. At that time, Aetna Supply presented an overview of the proposed project to upgrade the water meters throughout the community. As we talked about at that time, I think we all understand most of the water meters are at the ends of their lives, which obviously has a number of impacts. But one of them particularly, particularly relevant to our organization is it impacts the financial sustainability of our, our water and sewer funding. But just want to highlight again that, you know, similar systems as the AMI system being proposed, they are being implemented by many of our peer communities. This really is the modern technology that's being used in water meters. And it would allow for real-time monitoring, a level of leak detection and some other modern features to help prevent water loss, assure accurate billing and enhance customer service. I know we talked a little bit about the, at the last meeting, about the possibility of a resident facing application. We are continuing to talk with Aetna about what options exist there, as well as it was really clear to me at the last meeting that communication regarding the implementation of this project needs to be a priority. So we're also working on putting together a communication strategy related to this because it obviously, like many of the projects we do as a city, will have a short-term inconvenience for some of our residents, but hopefully a much longer-term benefit. So also just going to highlight again, I know I have these in the memo that hopefully you guys got a chance to see, but you know, Aetna is the exclusive census distributor in Michigan. We've worked with them to already replace about a third of the water meters in the city over the last handful of years. They have the capacity to acquire the level of inventory, but also perform the installations at the scale we're looking for. And I think lastly, the one I'll just hit again is, you know, like so many of these projects, if we're not ready to move forward right now, happy to talk about that, happy to, you know, discuss more. But I do think it's worth noting that, as they mentioned at the last meeting, we are at a point where if we order these meters prior to the end of September, we can avoid almost a $70,000 tariff charge. And I think that alone is enough of a reason to at least keep this kind of top of mind. If we're not ready, happy to talk more, but I do think we want to note that. And then the last thing I'll highlight is, as we get ready to go out for, to sell our bonds tomorrow, this is one of the primary projects that's been anticipated to be paid for by this first round of bond funding. Some one-time costs, we will be able to pay for with cash out of the water and sewer funds. But lastly, really just want to highlight that we put the estimate, the estimate that you all have in your packet. But unlike some projects, or think about the purchase orders we just approved with a vehicle where there is a set price, we sign a contract, it will not change, there is inevitably going to be some level of cost variation in this project based on the actual number of meters that become replaced. We have a good count, but I'm going to tell you, there are going to be some that we don't know about, there are going to be some that are sized different than our records show. And then there are also a variety of installation conditions that can be encountered. So what we're really looking for this evening is for the council to consider authorizing a project budget that does have a level of contingency included and authorize the city manager to work with the city attorney to enter into a contract with Aetna Supply to place the order or the inventory orders for these parts and start preparing for installation in the spring. So happy to talk more about that. I know this one is expensive and a big undertaking. So definitely happy to talk more.
Questions for Griffin? I know we talked about it quite a bit last time, so. When do the, when do, tomorrow is the sale of the bonds. When does the money actually come and available for the city?
We anticipate closing at the end of September, if everything goes well tomorrow. We, we do have, you know, by working with them, I mean, they know we're going out to bond. I mean, they're, they're ready to essentially press go and place the inventory orders for us. So that, that shouldn't be, you know, that, that's not an issue at this point in time. They have, the bond proceeds should be in hand this fall.
And like you mentioned, you'd save about $70,000 in tariffs.
And I, and I understand that, you know, when you're talking about a three and a half million dollar project, that percentage-wise, that doesn't seem like a lot, but I think we all know we can do a lot with $70,000.
Where do the meters come from? What country?
I don't know. Yeah, I think he said that they're.
They're assembled in Mexico.
Yes, that's what, that's exactly what he said. He said the parts come from all over, they're assembled in Mexico.
And then the neighboring communities, do they work with Aetna too? Some of them or?
My understanding is all of them that I have listed in the memo did this with Aetna.
Thank you. Okay, so what you're looking for is an authorization for a project budget, I took C3.5 million and allowing the city manager to enter into a contract with Aetna in the form approved by the city attorney to proceed with the meter replacement in the best interest for the city. So is there a motion to that effect?
So.
Support by Tim? Support by Paul? No comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Thank you. And the last update I have for you all this evening is kind of last minute, city staff received a invite to participate in a virtual meeting today with Eagle, where they informed us and some staff with the city of Wyoming that they have identified certain levels of PFAS in fish in some of the miscellaneous lakes on the north side of Granville and the west side of Wyoming. So lakes like Sanford Lake and Porter Lake and some of these, these little lakes we have around town. So, lakes like Sanford Lake and Porter Lake, and some of these, these little lakes we have around town. And that, in an abundance of caution, they are going to be instituting a no eating order on any fish that are caught in these lakes. We just had that meeting this afternoon at maybe two or three, so I do not have a whole lot more information at this time. I will share with you when I know more, but they did share at the meeting today that they will be putting out a press release this evening. So, if you see it from the news, I wanted to make sure you were aware that we were told this afternoon. It sounds like they obviously are, are on top of it and feel like that is the necessary step. We'll obviously do whatever we need to do from a city and park side to do what we can to communicate that. But I don't really know a whole lot more about it than that right now, but I will keep you all posted just in case you see Granville and, don't eat the fish, show up on the news here tonight. Other than that.
Fishing there to begin with?
Pardon?
I didn't know fishing was there to begin with.
I was surprised to hear about all the variety of fish they caught.
Large mouth bass, small mouth bass, and there's a lot on the Indian Lakes.
Yeah, they were telling us that, yep, they had to go out and catch fish, and there's parts, parts per million of PFAS in these fish fillets, and, I mean, they, they just, again, in general, I think most of us are aware, PFAS is a very sensitive topic for the state right now in a, in a lot of ways, but, you know, I know if they're feeling like they need to take this step, then obviously there's, there's some scientific backing behind that. So, they definitely said recreationally, you know, it's not gonna hurt anybody to continue to fish, and I think you all are aware, you know, lakes like Porter Lake are mostly privately surrounded anyway, but just, just be aware that kind of this west side of Wyoming and north side of Granville is kind of an area of interest, is what they called it, in terms of the historic kind of industrial uses in that area and the potential impacts of PFAS. So, happy to answer more questions. The state will be hosting a town hall meeting on this at the city of Wyoming City Hall on September 24th. That is what I have to share right now, if you're interested in learning more, and I will share more as I find it. Other than that, I, it's good to see you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Griffin? Councilmember comments, Randy wants to.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Moxy and the DDA, and really exciting project, we talked about it a couple of times, and I'm sure you guys will be back, because there's more to do, with this thing moving, but it looks great, and we're all really excited about having you here, and thank you for being willing to invest in downtown Granville.
Same, thank you for all your work, appreciate it.
Thanks for answering all of our questions.
Yes, of course.
So, then I also want to say congratulations to Calvin Christian, who just did their dedication this last week on their big building renovation project, if you haven't been down either recently. Drive down, take a look, building looks amazing, got a chance to go through and tour it the other day as well, it's, I call it kind of transformative, I mean, it's very... Building was built originally in 1964, and this is probably one of the worst significant updates that they've done since then, right, Tim? Have you been through it yet? No, you gotta go check it out, for sure, but just want to say congratulations, you know, another school in our community that's investing in their infrastructure, and, I mean, it just looks really nice, it's privately funded. Took them a number of years to fundraise for it, so it's really something for them to be proud of, for the community to be proud of. And then just looking forward to the MML convention next week, I don't know who else is going, it's here in Grand Rapids, so, you want?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that, I'll be hosted at the Grand Plaza downtown, but it's always a good time to talk to people from other communities, and always good educational sessions, so appreciate the opportunity to go again.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks to you guys, I like your stuff, and excited to see it come into Granville.
Same, thank you. And nothing else, thank you.
Yeah, great, yeah, Moxy, we're welcoming to Granville, we welcome you to Granville, looking forward to seeing this project. You know, like Josh mentioned, last week was open house at Helen, and Griffin and I, and I don't know, maybe some others were there, and nice project, and a lot of money they raised, and, well, like I said to the superintendent, the principal, you know, that, it's one thing people look for when they go to a community is good schools, private and public schools, and we've got good private and good public schools, so that makes all of our job more enjoyable and easier. Looking forward to going to the environmental sustainability event this week, weekend, and I think Tyler, yeah, Granville Tree Project is gonna be there as well, so it should be a lot of fun. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support. Alright, all those in favor, will we say yes? Yes, and the opposite can say no. Thank you everybody for coming, we appreciate it.